Good evening, welcome to our workshop on May 20th. Would you please join me in pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So Tiffany, you have roll call? She does. Okay. And, uh... So, being in workshop, we have some reports tonight. But I do think, before we get into reports, I want to note that there was the first ever Section III Girls Flag Football on Friday night, and I recall that Baldwinsville won the first ever Section III Flag Football. Okay, I don't think there's anything else going on, right?
Let me make a quick note, because I had the opportunity today to attend, be a champion at the stadium. And wow, that's all I can say is congratulations to you and the people that work with you. But it was an amazing event, so I want to make sure that I let you know that I'm probably on behalf of the whole organization. Kudos to you. I even said to Joe, "The shape of the meeting today." I do, I mean, I'm a chair of presentation, so your work is really appreciated. That's really good stuff.
Oh, thank you for reminding me. Thank you very much. Okay. Well, with that, I guess we'll turn it over to Joe in the cabinet for our reports.
Yep, we're gonna first start off with our summer curriculum and professional development offering update. And so Renee is likely the one to turn it over to Christine. I think so, I'll give you the...
Okay, so... We're excited that we have a lot of offerings to go through with you tonight. So, we link in the brochure, there's over thirty offerings. If you click on the link up here, you'll see all thirty offerings. We also, through the presentation, there's LinkedIn to each offering, how it connects back to the strategic plan. It always grounds us in our work.
So to start us off with our P-12 offerings, these are offerings that are offered to teachers all throughout across the district. Project-based learning, this is going to be a big lift for us, not only this year, but in the years to come. We have two opportunities for staff members to be trained in PBL. One is at the end of July with our learning coaches, who have already gone through the initial PBL training. And then the second one, we are attending, we're hosting, what's called PBL Works with OCM-BOCS. The administration will be trained in the admin portion of PBL. Our coaches will be attending a specific coach strand that they have developed for learning coaches. And then we also have teachers who will be attending that weren't able to attend in the July session. So we're excited to really dig in and get the work started with that.
Okay, for the next one, we are excited to offer a new opportunity for our staff. And so Lori Johnson, she's our Assistant Technology Learning Coach, and she has been, in the past, working with programs of devices for our students, but will have a missing as a training for our staff. And so now, when her role, she can offer the training for her staff to teachers and teaching assistants to make sure that the communication is promoted throughout the day, all day long. And so for the summer, she'll be helping our summer school students sell their new devices, their new classrooms, new staff array, but then also offer training for our staff, for teachers and teaching assistants to help with future, next year, you know, development and planning for the devices for our students.
So, P-6, some of the offerings. One is the Science of Reading, but it's really a series of workshops under the Science of Reading. There's gonna be an offering for all P-6 staff that didn't be offered last year. This workshop also, so we're offering it to those who couldn't come last year. And then there, that's two days, and then there's a day for part two. So those who did come last year, take it to that next level, that next step. Then math is going to be our big focus. As you know, we've purchased the new math series for P through six. At P-5, it's Eureka Math Squared, so all of those teachers, that's a series. Three days of training, broken up by strands or grade bands, I should say. And then, I'm gonna skip for a second, then the Desmos Math Training is for sixth grade. So there's four days of just that, and then alternating those days is the math curriculum. So everyone, you know, if you're, for example, in the K-2 strand, and it's open to anyone, which is really all our teachers at K-2 teach math. They'll go through that training with Eureka, and then the second day, the representatives from each of those grade levels and the buildings who are in the math curriculum will have time to get together to now work on some unit development, really delve through what they learned from the trainer the day before. Science Committee will also be getting together. We need to start looking at some of the assessments now that we've been using some Sonya for a few years. They're ready to really take a look at that, and how do we really make those assessments even more meaningful. So Erin Robertson, our Science Instructional Coach, give me a look at the teachers on that.
All right, and at the secondary levels, the PBL I wanted to highlight. We've got the Reading Feast and the Root of the Matter. Most of those professional developments focused on reading strategies. So the Reading Feast really digs deep into comprehension strategies for teachers to use in their classroom regardless of the content area. Root of the Matter, that's going to be giving teachers strategies to use word attack skills, such as looking at roots and prefixes, help kids get meanings from words that they may not be familiar with. The Techify Your Teaching, that's going to take a look at all of the different resources that we have available as a district, such as iPuzzle, Canvas, Screencastify. We have so many great resources available, but it's important that our teachers know how to appropriately use them and have time to plan and incorporate them into their lessons. So we're going to be working on that this summer. We also have Beyond the Buzz, which is looking at how AI is used in the classroom. And AI is a huge topic right now, and it's definitely not something going away. So how can we give our kids the tools and strategies that they need in order to appropriately use AI? Tackling Taboos, so we'll be working with teachers in addressing uncomfortable conversations that may come up in the classroom. So at the secondary level, there's lots of taboo conversations that come up. So how do we address those in an appropriate manner with a consistent message? Unlocking Student Engagement. This one, Erin Robertson, she did her master's degree in the neuroscience of the brain with kids. So she's offering it to our teachers, and it's really helping them understand the adolescent mind as much as you can as possible. And using strategies to best engage the minds of our young kids in the high school and middle school and dirty. And then last but not least, we are offering training for our science investigation. So next year, our teachers have new state required labs at both earth science and living environment. So we are offering teachers the opportunity to come and learn about the labs and actually participate in the labs themselves before we have students use them in the classroom.
And then Institute Services offerings. We want to continue to offer CIS. And so what that is, is a three to five day training depending on the physical restraint component. And it's really helping weight减分 practices, verbal de-escalation, for all of our staff. We have almost trained all of our crisis teams, and that's our goal. But we want to continue this training, and it hasn't well received last summer, so we're excited to continue this. As far as Second Step Digital and VITMIS Training. So Second Step Digital, that is a tool that we use. This is a tool that helps teach explicitly social-emotional learning at elementary levels. What we've done in the past, we've had support staff come in and teach a few lessons in every class throughout. But what we really find that's valuable is having teachers use this tool. We use it throughout the year, that's about twenty-six to twenty-eight lessons per grade level. And so the teachers who have used it this year, they really find it valuable in their social-emotional teaching in the classroom. And so we want to continue that in a workshop style, but add a little twist this summer with a VITMIS component as well. So how can we also use the VITMIS, not the progress monitor, Second Step, and what we do in the classroom? And Jen Sawyer, our learning coach, will be heading this up. Right, SEL Advisory Planning. So we've had this now for a few years. We had a teacher team at Ray, and they have really had a passion towards SEL. So they came to me a few years ago and they asked if they could develop these lessons. So with Christine and I, they have developed Building My Lessons. So once a month, the Ray has advisory, and so these lessons are taught building wide, and they target SEL competencies such as self-awareness, self-management, and so on. We, of course, want to continue IUP Planning Days because it's super helpful for our special education staff and teachers in our TAs to help just, you know, plan forward for the fall during case loads. We're gonna offer two different options, hopefully, that they can attend one of those. The School Counseling Program update. You all are aware of our school counseling program. So we meet every summer, just to meet annually. I'll be meeting with our support staff, and we'll look at what we're doing academically, socially, emotionally, and career-wise, and they'll update the plan if it on our website. And last but not least, teaching assistants, they are our fun-song heroes, as we saw today. You know, we're our special champions. So we've been working with Pats, we really want to make sure we have some meaningful training for them. And so we have planned a training, we're planning it outside the summer school days because some of our TAs do work the summer school days. So we're doing something in August, and we're going to target, you know, just hot topics, behavior management, verbal de-escalation, and all those things. So that being said, do you have any questions for us?
So how many days does this run? And this is voluntary, I believe, right?
Which one of the DAs?
The whole of it.
Or all of it? Oh, yes. Yeah.
Yeah, all of summer trainings. Voluntary, it begins many times from July 1st, goes until the end of August, just a few times. You know, we're working around summer school, we're working around the two weeks of the enrichment camps. It gets whittled away.
And how is your enrollment thus far? Are people already starting to sign up for it?
They got the save the gate, they got the brochure, so they can start doing the dates. They'll start gradual staying another week. Christine's still putting everything on the calendar.
Historically, has the attendance been really good for these summer offerings?
Yeah. Having a waitlist of twenty for everything, just as a rule of thumb.
Just to put it in context, seventy-two dollar sets, one of you, about $200,000 is spent usually during the summer, for professional development, staff coming. You think about, maybe a $50,000, now that's a lot of hours, that's a lot of staff.
So with the PBL part of the agreement, teachers opted in to participate this year. They have to complete one unit with the help of a learning coach. And then the learning coach can go in and work with the teacher.
And I would say too, that our learning coaches are pretty savvy. Anytime they offer professional development, they are thinking of ways how they will follow up with teachers in their classrooms after those PD sessions. And I think, you know, specifically math, you're gonna see a lot of that follow-up come in. The SEL, I think, is also something that people really look for support with, with students in their classrooms. So they're pretty busy doing that. And then the other thing I would say, for the August sessions for PBL that PBL Works is going on, so I think in the leadership strand, there are opportunities for the board to attend, if there's interest on your part as well. So we'll give you that information once they send out the registration. So it will be hosted here, but it's open up regionally. So there, any other district in this region can send staff to this session, to these sessions. And then, once the regional seats, the deadline has passed for our registration, they'll open it up statewide. And you potentially could see people from across the state and from neighboring states come to this workshop as well.
I was just gonna say, that's a good question, because it's sometimes people wonder how the learning coaches get the business they get. A lot of it does come from the summer stuff. They definitely take those attending sheets, they see who attended, they know for like the Science of Reading, and then they go and they make the appointment. Typically, what they've done is before the session's over, they're booking people already.
I was gonna add, you know, that these are the offerings that we as a district have. OCM-BOCS and other organizations in our staff take full advantage of some professional development through OCM-BOCS and others as well. So when all is said and done, there's a lot of training that is occurring for our staff. And then, in addition, because it is voluntary, those staff members that maybe don't have the opportunity or, you know, we feel that they should be working their way toward some of the professional development. We do have a way to make that happen during the school day or during the school year. Sometimes there's some offerings after school. But as Tonya, the rest of the section, that's where we can get the learning coaches into classrooms working with staff to make sure that there's that consistency. So if there is a priority that we have within the district, we can ensure that every teacher is trained.
I just wanted to say this is a really robust program. It has something for everyone and a lot of timely topics, you know, that are really on the critical education. And I'm so excited to see the offers for teacher assistants here and see that they're purposefully included in the professional base. Thank you very much.
Two things. The link to the brochure doesn't seem to be working, at least for me. It says it has, but they don't have access or permission. So just to throw that out there.
It gives permission, waiting for you.
Well, that's what I figured, that's why I wanted to say it. My other question is, are we, like, sending out a survey or doing a thought exchange to see if there's any, like, topics that teachers want us to, like, offer over the summer? Are we getting feedback from them when coming up with the programs, or how does that come?
So every superintendent's conference, and we collect feedback from the staff members that attend. And one of the questions we ask them is, what topics are you interested in seeing in the future? So we use a lot of that information, as well as conversations that our learning coaches have had with teachers when they're out there in the classrooms with them, as well as obviously looking at our strategic plan and identifying areas that we need to work on. So those are all comments collected.
And I would say at our department meetings too, that's definitely a topic of conversation.
Makes sense.
So Renee, you mentioned the PBL as possibly a registered state sport. Would it be inappropriate for us to sort of, if there's room, participate in other professional development? Because some of these things are really very interesting.
I don't know. I wouldn't wanna be, I wouldn't wanna, you know...
Crash a cab.
Yeah. I don't know if that would ruin the dynamic.
Baseball cap.
No, no, you know, so, I mean, I agree with Christine. I think you've got a really robust selection of topics that I think are, you know, I'd love to know more about.
Yeah, we can definitely make sure you have the back of the brochure in the Friday letter too, when these things come up, we can highlight some of those ones there, you know, that are more relevant. But yeah, that's gonna start.
And I need mailing up the brochure to the board.
Thank you.
And just so, just so you all know, that when we have our new hires, even though we don't have the prior orientation until August, every new hire is provided the opportunity to attend any of these sessions that would be relevant. So twenty thousand elementary teachers that he's hiring, he's gonna want that person to do the math training. So that gives our new staff an opportunity to meet teachers in an informal setting in the summertime, and make some connections before they show up on the first day and wonder who they're gonna sit with for lunch.
Great.
No other questions?
Well, I just want to say that the board, I think as a whole, as everybody's expressed, their pride and support of our teachers and our staff and our TAs and everybody. So I think we would be extremely supportive of any additional education that you see necessary, or, you know, we would certainly support funding or time or whatever required. Okay. I just have one kind of different question. You made a brief mention about community partnerships. And I know in the past, there's been a, what, an effort, I think, to have community businesses that kind of partner to have internships and show people, so people that especially are going right into the work world things. Do we have some of those partnerships now? And are we pursuing more, or just can you give us a little background?
Sure, we definitely have those partnerships. And actually, we had a conversation last week, Wayne and I did, but we constantly have, you know, the Lions Club and Rotary and all those community partnerships contacting us and wanting, wanting help and be a part of, you know, what we do here. And so we've been talking about, you know, how we kind of incorporate more of that into, you know, working together. And I know, so actually, so we had the Woodrow Beanathon a few weeks ago. And so I was with Kevin Merrill, he's the Director of Parks and Rec this Saturday. And so he's been approached our Rotary Club, and they actually wanted us up like some type of teen site for bigger high school, or for high school students and dirty students. And so, you know, he's talking about that. So I think that just continuing to have those conversations will also give people the table and what kind of reasons are out there, and how can we, you know, use those and from the other, so.
I would add too, that, and other area of instruction, the NAZO, is we have the data and the resources from the Community Cafe on Project-Based Learning. It was in a survey, in-depth interviews that RMS compiled for us. So we have all of those contacts, maybe those individuals. So we're planning, because part of the next phase, when we get into the project-based learning piece, is to really develop those authentic experiences for students. And so it's making sure that our staff is trained first. Once they're trained, then we can, you know, look to expand those opportunities because we want those individuals, those agencies, whether it's members of the greater Chamber of Commerce or other connections we have, working and connecting with our kids so that they're able to find success, you know, whatever path they take beyond school.
Yep. And go ahead, Renee.
Yeah, so the other avenue for partnership that we've seen is our CTE-approved pathways. So we have that in business, marketing, business finance, and in culinary studies. So typically, if a student is pursuing the CTE pathway, at some point, they must shadow and or partner when it comes to side business. And typically, the work-based learning teachers who have that certification will facilitate that and provide oversight for those students who are participating in those. It's a pretty small percentage of our population that participates in that because BOCS has such, you know, more robust potentially programs for those students to participate in. But we do have those options for kids.
Thank you.
And we'll just look at the rest of the program too, in that we do have our Excedent School Year Program, and we have to be...
Sam knows about that, doesn't she?
She does. And so those partnerships continue over the summer. We can have our students out doing job coaching in local businesses also along.
I just want to say, at the Wellness Committee, we need to speak about...
Question. Sure, there you go.
At the Wellness Committee, we have discussed, you know, community involvement. I'm saying, talk to... Yeah, you would. Yes, so in the future.
Great.
So if there's no further questions regarding professional development, we're gonna shift to our data update. Students with disabilities, based on a conversation we had in a previous board workshop, we're providing a little bit more, deeper understanding of the data surrounding that, that subgroup. So I will turn it over to Carrie, Jenna, and Danielle. And if there's questions that come up along the way, hopefully we'll give you what it is that you need.
Okay. So we just want to touch upon, you know, under our office, Institute Services, we do operate under IDEA, and so that just guarantees that all citizens with disabilities, they have access to free and proper education. And we also are operating on abilities restricted to the environment. Danielle will speak to the S accountability in a little bit. And then we also here operate under the blueprint from New York State. And so that just ensures that citizens have high-quality instruction, that they have a multi-tiered system of support. They're really focused on meaningful partnerships with parents in their children's programming. We wanted to walk through the special education referral process. So you know, step one, referrals made can either be by the parent or the building. And then, so once that referral is generated in our office, we need an informed consent. So what that means is we send home procedural safeguards as well as a consent. And once we get that informed consent back to our office, we start the process. So step two, the evaluation takes place at the school level. Our school psychologists are the ones who spearhead that program, but it's a comprehensive evaluation, so the academic functioning, social-emotional functioning, cognitive skills, and also complete some classroom observations. Once the evaluation's completed, then we move to step three. So that is where we have our initial CSU meeting, we determine eligibility. From there, so if we determine eligibility for a student, that means that a student could fall under one of thirteen educational categories. Then at that meeting, once they're eligible, we would determine their IEP. So together, we put together the IEP, we talk about what program programming would take place, we talk about goals that would help focus and target their progress. And then once that happens, step five, so once it's done the IEP, what happens is at least once a year, we meet at minimum for the hand review process. So we look at the IEP, we talk about progress, and we also make a plan for next year. We can come to table anytime if the parent wants to, but at the middle, we come to table at least once. And then every three years, we have a reevaluation that takes place, and so that's updated testing. And so we just determine that the child still has educational disability and that the programming is, you know, leading earnings. So this, the data for this year for initial referrals, you can see... Yep, so right now, we have currently eighty-three initial referrals. We just wanted to point out, I mean, this is pretty hard for this year. We do have some, first of all, we have an influx around this time. So you can see right there, we have eight referrals pending actually right now. So what's been different in the past is you can see for the referrals for parents is fifty-five in the middle. And so we have noticed that to be an increase from past years. And, you know, one thing we're seeing, like, after COVID, a lot of these referrals, they have a mental health component to it. And, you know, with the mental health component, it's hard because sometimes, you know, parents come to us and they report that their children's struggling, like maybe anxiety or depression or that kind of thing. And so what we have to determine is the impact at our CSU meetings. And so... I just want to make sure that, you know, even though, like, sometimes it looks like the child might be doing well at school, the parent might come to us and report that their child is really overwhelmed at home with, you know, stress or, or just, you know, feeling anxious or depressed. And so, that being said, you know, we really want to take a look at the whole child at these meetings. It's not black or white, it's gray, so you really take it case by case. And a factor that we often run into is primary absenteeism. And so, you know, it's hard because when that happens, our number one goal is to get the child back at school, so we can help give them anything that they need. We're going to dive into that data a little bit, the primary absenteeism, but that is something that we haven't found to be a factor, notability. And Carrie is going to discuss the population of our students who was labeled with a disability.
Okay, so you can see some important numbers here. We just kind of divided those out, and it goes a little bit more specifically. Right now, we have seven hundred and eighty-eight students labeled as having a disability in the school district, which, as you probably remember from our COVID snapshot, is up a little bit. At that time, it was seven seventy-six. And this is a number that changes on a daily basis. We can have students move in, we can have students move out. We can identify three students, we could classify students. So it is a number that literally changes on a day-to-day basis that we're kind of thinking on top of. We cover it about fourteen to fifteen percent as an identification rate, which has been stable. New York State is the, is twenty percent, and National is about fifteen percent. So we've got a way how far we go. The state indicates you anywhere after eighteen to nineteen percent, because we're... The state indicates you anywhere after eighteen to nineteen percent is where you're going to start to be really put on a plate. We have not been in that boat ever. Maybe only sixteen, I think. We hovered and then we got things together.
My recollection is that used to be like twelve percent or something. It's increased over the years.
Going back a long time. Um, yes, yes.
Hard to believe I remember that long.
This is my eighteenth year in the district. And when we, when I started, we slowly went down. And what happened was when we really implemented the RTI process, we started looking at interventions and talked about some of those things, how we really got, we really got really good on, I think, yeah, providing those interventions and monitoring at least. Post-COVID, we went back up a few percentage points and now we're back stable at about fourteen. And that all kind of goes back to what Jenna was talking about with that mental health component and some of those pieces that go with that, that chronic absenteeism and all of the, all of the pieces that all of the data will speak to today. And then at the end, we'll talk about some of the things that we're doing about that. But before we get into that chronically absent piece, and Danielle will talk more about that, where you'll see students with disabilities are about seventy-six percent versus that ninety-four percent for all students. We talk about that proportionality piece being important. Danielle will speak more to that. I want to jump ahead to this graph below that takes you into the thirteen categories and really breaks it out into students labeled with disabilities in the district and we will get the categories that they're identified as, because this is an important piece. Speech-language impairment is really the only disability for doing things right that can be remediated essentially. And we know that if earlier we identify students, the more intensive support we provide with speech-language therapy, those students can be declassified. One of the things this school district does that no, no, I don't think no other, but most others don't do, is we offer speech improvement as well. So if a student is not qualified transitioning from preschool services to school-age services because the qualifications are different. In preschool, you only have to demonstrate a delay. Once you hit school age, you have to show a delay and that it's significantly impacting your education, which can be harder to transition, it can hurt them, especially if the child's been getting speech services all through preschool. We will offer speech improvement because we know there's a likelihood for regression and a student will then be identified down the road. So I think we do a really good job with that. And you can see that is a fairly large percentage, but early on in the years. There are a very small percentage of students that might go on to continue to receive speech services as part of their disability. However, it's not the category that they're identified under, it's a piece of their services. All of the other categories except for learning disability are categories that are a little more obvious, right? That they might come in with a diagnosis, they might have had services at a transition for preschool, it might be something, you know, a doctor and a family or a U-Rat Rock Services or PWPD. It's, you know, it's usually pretty significant and identifiable. Learning disability is the trickiest one. We always say, it's not like you can go get a blood test, it's going to say you have a learning disability. Really, you're supposed to be able to rule out all of the things that overlap. Chronic absenteeism, good instruction, response intervention. Those are all pieces we look at as part of an identification once we get to the table. And that can be really, really difficult. When you see this overlap and you see students with disabilities and their chronic absenteeism rating seventy-six percent, we don't always know what comes first. Does the chronic absenteeism lead to a disability, what appears to be a learning disability because there are gaps and a lack of good instruction over the years? Or is a student chronically absent because school is essentially harder for them because they're struggling with learning disability? Similarly, you know, those things go hand-in-hand sometimes with a socioeconomic disadvantage. Not always, but there are often times where maybe we've talked about these things, students are struggling, having their basic needs met, right? So they're going to come to school and be ready to learn. All of those things can create gaps that might look like a learning disability. And sometimes we get to the table and we're not always sure what came first. The biggest piece, I think, at that point for us is will specially-designed instruction support this student? And if not, one thing that we will often do is then offer a five oh four plan. Because we recognize there is a diagnosis of some sort of mental health challenge and they might benefit from accommodations, but they're not qualifying for specially-designed instruction. So those are some of the things we do and why that breakdown there is, is important and supports some of the data that I think you'll see later in this presentation. And then finally, at the bottom, this is something the Volts School District is very proud of. We have less than five of our, five percent of our students that are supported and in setting outside of, in an alternate setting, so outside of the school district, which is a really low number. But again, always can improve and we are always looking at ways to bring students back to support them before we do those referrals. What can we do more? Some of the things we'll talk about later will be some of those things, TCIS is what is used with that. Because oftentimes, students that are referred to an alternate setting are aggressive. And so we're looking at ways to build the capacity of our staff to be able to support those pieces. And then time in the general classroom setting. We're worried about eighty-three percent of our students that are in district are in the general education setting, eighty percent or more of the day. And as mentioned in previous presentations, the national average for that is sixty-six percent. New York State has done a better job in general over the past few years. They've gone from a lower sixty percent to, well, seventy to seventy-five. So that's good, but we're still doing better. And that's another piece that we're always looking at, ways to support our students within the general education setting. So Danielle will talk a little bit more about that ESS accountability and the proportionality of students with disabilities and all students.
So before I jump into that, I just want to speak to this data that's up here at the top of page two. Because when I was here in April, talking all things data, a couple of things came up in regards to proportionality, but also intersectionality. And so we know that a student might not be labeled as having a disability, but they also might be considered economically disadvantaged. So in that example, fifty-six percent of our students with disabilities are also considered economically disadvantaged. And so there's different reasons for that. One's simply being that students can qualify as being economically disadvantaged when they have other supports in place, Medicaid, SNAP benefits, that sort of a thing. And so sometimes that also plays a role. But I just wanted to point out that we see students often intersecting across those various subgroups. So again, under ESS accountability, really the, the point through every student succeeds is to be promoting educational equity. So we're held accountable as a school district when it comes to not only how all of our students perform, but how specific subgroups of students perform. So how do our students with disabilities perform in comparison to all students? Or how do they perform in comparison to students who may be economically disadvantaged, for example? So we are looking at this data tonight even as this subgroup of students with disabilities. But in our next data byte, we'll be looking at students who are economically disadvantaged and there are students who fall into both of those categories who count in both. So at this point, for our accountability status as a school district, we continue to be a district under local support and improvement, which is a good thing. Formerly, it was called good standing by the State Education Department. So last year, they made that shift in language and in thought process of why? Because the state is really focusing on continuous improvement and ensuring that school districts are making that continuous improvement, that these subgroups of students are making continuous improvement. So by phrasing, the terminology is local support and improvement, it portrays that we can always continue to do better. And again, even if it's a percentage point or two, it's moving in the right direction. So again, we continue to be identified for local support and improvement, which just means that everything is controlled at the school level. We have not been identified to be on any sort of a state plan at this point, though you may recall that a couple of years ago, we did have a couple of subgroups and a couple of schools that were. And so when we have eight different school buildings, we're always looking to find that educational equity for all students. But we do certainly have those data bytes where we're really zooming in and looking how each school is doing in addition to how the, the school district as a whole is. So this, this deep dive that we're taking tonight is really coming out of the concept of the, the data byte. But because we're talking about that students with disabilities subgroup, this page just compares the, the subgroup to the all-students category. So again, I know I was recently here speaking to some of this, but I just wanted to give that description a little bit more clearly in how this data makes that comparison. So for graduation rate, for example, our all-students subgroup is very close to falling in that greater than seventy-five percent of schools statewide when schools are ranked for graduation rate, as many of you know, as we've celebrated for quite some time this school year. But we know that, again, when we're considering that educational equity, we have this subgroup who is actually close to falling into the tenth through fiftieth percent statewide when we compare to the all-students subgroup. So those are the conversations, or that's the data that gives context to the conversations that we're, that we're having and why the graduation rate for, the average graduation rate for students with disabilities is only seventy-six percent where all-students is, is higher than that. Just as, again, an example, we want to see that number become closer, we want to see that, that gap close. And so we'll continue to have conversations about that. But as both Jenna and Carrie had mentioned, chronic absenteeism is a big factor when it comes to identifying a student as, as having a disability and something that we have to take into consideration often when it comes to just some of those interventions or supports that are being put in place because it's important for the student to be present and receive those interventions and know that the student's progressing as opposed to not being in school to receive that. So in the elementary-middle group, when it comes to our accountability, our, we see much less of a discrepancy between the all-students subgroup and our students with disabilities subgroup. We have about sixteen percent of all students who fall into that criteria as being chronically absent, which means that they've missed ten percent or more of days in a school year. So if there's a hundred eighty days in a school year, a student's chronically absent when they miss eight days, which, you know, ends up being two to three days a month. Our students with disabilities subgroup is close to twenty percent. So there's about that four percent difference there where we have a higher rate of chronic absenteeism with our students with disabilities subgroup compared to all students. On the high school side, we see a bigger gap. So we see about twenty-two percent of our students who are considered chronically absent at that level, but compared to our students with disabilities, that's at about thirty-four percent. So again, trying to hypothesize or talk as data teams as to why we see discrepancies on both sides, particularly with this subgroup. I know one of the things that we discussed a little bit was just how students with disabilities, when you think of a student with a traumatic brain injury, they're going to be going to doctor's appointments, they're going to be, you know, receiving some of that significant medical care that they need to be physically well. So we do believe that that plays a role, but we certainly, you know, want to continue to work with those building teams to ensure that we're doing everything that we can to have students in school. And then those last two accountability categories are both related to state assessments. So whether it's the grade three through eight assessments on the elementary-middle side, the NICE assessment for English language learners, or the New York State Alternative Assessment, which some students with disabilities take, in addition to our region's performance. Both the weighted average achievement and core subject performance speak to students performing on those standardized tests. And when we look at those categories, what we see across the board across all buildings with our students with disabilities subgroup, is that they're falling within that ten to fifty percent statewide when our results are ranked. So we're often scored as that two in terms of state accountability. We would be identified as having to go on a state plan for improvement if we had two consecutive years of a score of a one, which puts us in the lowest ten percent of schools or districts statewide. But even within that ten percent, often what we're finding over the last couple of years is that the state is only ending up identifying or putting schools on plans within that lowest five percent. So we're still in good standing in terms of not falling into that lowest five or lowest ten percent range. But that's where the data is so powerful and the data is able to help us when we're having these conversations and, and trying to continue to analyze and make sure that the actions that we're taking speak to the data that we're seeing. So I know that Carrie had mentioned how we're going to circle back to some of those action steps, Jenna as well. But again, we'll continue to analyze the data. I hope that tonight's deep dive took much closer of a look at that data byte that you saw. So I'll turn it back over to Carrie to describe some of those things that we're doing or planning to do.
I just ask a quick question.
Of course.
If I'm reading this properly, the trend is negative. Chronic absenteeism is up, achievement is, well, achievement's close, right?
Holding study, I would say.
Pretty much holding study. But the absenteeism is definitely increasing, right?
Yeah, so that's the other, I think Jeremy, who'd actually asked that, I, when I came in April, because what we've kind of been seeing with chronic absenteeism, especially during the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, so if there was one more column there, we would see more of those fours. But because we were in that remote instruction period, just the definition of being present got kind of skewed and how are we defining a student being present? So it, it seems to me, as I look at that data or track that data, we're, we're kind of just leveling off when it comes to where we were and where we are now. But much of that was simply the data in itself, in my professional opinion. Again, because it was such a question as to, well, my market is kid absent or present today, I don't see them on my screen and so forth. Great.
I was going to ask too, in regards to those percentages, do we know if, like, let's say, for example, for the chronic absenteeism for all students, if we were at ten percent, would that put us at a four? Or do we know what that level is?
We do, yeah. So each of the categories or the levels that we get assigned, the four, three, two, and one, there's a binder and it's in my car. And it breaks down actually for each subgroup, what those CUS scores are when it comes to the, the level that gets assigned. And so what I tried to do, just so that I'm not sharing that little binder with everybody when I speak to this data, is put that little green arrow here. So like that three is really close to going up to a four. Or putting that warning sign with that red circle to say that we're close to that bottom range within a point of jumping down to a two.
Okay.
To save you the, the pain of focusing your eyes on that binder.
If there's no symbol next to it, we're heading to the middle?
Exactly.
Okay, perfect.
Exactly. Great.
Can I just ask another data question?
Of course.
Before we, on how, were you guys surprised at all that most of the students with disabilities identify as male? Or is that just a reflection of the fact that we have more men than women in the school?
We actually have very close to the same percentage of, of male and female students. But, and I- But and I don't have the national statistic, but I do believe that more male students are identified than females.
Isn't it typical too that they would fall under the health impaired category?
Well, so I was going to say, I'm not surprised by, and I bet if you broke down the males and females by category, you would see probably that O H I category would be predominantly the bigger category or emotionally disabled students are more predominantly male. For some reason, it goes into females tend to internalize more, whereas male students, when they're struggling, even even male students with learning disabilities, when they're frustrated, they might externalize those behaviors. And so they tend to be more aggressive and that leads to a higher identification rate or disruptive in a sense.
I mean, you, I mean, like at the end, basically, you said what I was going to say. It is, from what I know, it's males are more likely to be diagnosed with disabilities, say like ADHD than females are, due to the kind of like the things that you explained. So also I could be like some future with like testing, say done more males. You know, I was a human with ADHD, you know, it was definitely hard to get a diagnosis. So there's also challenges in that field, same like compared to males and females, you know, males. I think they definitely exerted, say, differently than some females can, but you know, it always differentiates in the child. But, you know, basically, yeah, she said what I was going to say.
Carrie, just just a quick question. I'm I'm looking back at the disability categories graphic there. I'm just trying to, I'm trying to understand what's in each of those. Actually, I can't really tease at it, but my question is, our second largest category is other. And I'm wondering what comprises?
The other health impaired category?
Yeah.
So typically, another health impaired category would be a student with a diagnosis that meets criteria to be eligible for specially designed instruction. Now, often, there's also overlap. Those may be students who also could qualify as a learning disability category, so it's tricky. The difference being that these students might have a diagnosis. And when you pick the category of eligibility or you change a category, sometimes students might fall under more than one. You want to pick the category that best describes the difficulties the student is having within the school setting. So they may appear to have a learning disability, but also have a diagnosis and have some behaviors that are going with that. So you would want the IEP to reflect that, so you would pick the other health impaired category. You also could have some other medical categories that might fall under here that don't qualify as like a multiply handicap category. So occasionally, you may have a student with a seizure disorder. They might fall under that, but predominantly, this category tends to be ADHD, that's worse. Sometimes I will also say, I think we do a good job at getting people to understand that the category of eligibility is important. But we do sometimes have parents that might be resistant to an autism designation. And so another health impaired category would be an area that could also work for a high functioning autistic student. And so sometimes we will work with a family and pick a category that everyone's in agreement with. That makes sense.
It does.
Sort of a catch-all.
And that's actually the question I wanted to ask you is, I thought I thought the answer might be something like that. Are are students ever kept in more than one category because of the way that there there seems to be a little bit of flexibility in in choice in terms of an actual designation? Would would a student be ever be included in more than one of these categories, Sam, do you think so?
Well, so the state designates what what criteria should be used to determine eligibility under a category. Usually at the CSC table, the committee decides the category of eligibility. And that can change at a three-year reevaluation, right? So we've got initial eligibility, but you might do a reevaluation three years later. And sometimes our younger students, they may appear to fall under a category of learning disability. And as they get older, there's more of an inattentive piece and another category looks better. And now we're doing, you know, sometimes some of those inattentive behaviors are developmental at a younger age. And so now as they get older, this becomes a category where their eligibility is more apparent. And so you can change that category. If a student is meeting criteria in more than one category, the committee should decide the category of eligibility or designation based on, again, what best describes the difficulties at that point in time in the school setting. You should not change an area of designation unless it's a reevaluation year and there's a full reevaluation, full data evaluation to support a change.
And just not for here, but just a quick question, is there someplace where I can find what the criteria are for each of those?
Yeah, it's in the Part 200 recs and I mean, I can kind of, you could Google it and find it. But Part 200 recs would be the best place to get it.
And just for clarification on the graphic as well, the graphic represents those seven hundred eighty-seven kids who are identified as having a disability. So it's not duplicating students in this count, like the intersectionality with being male, female, who doesn't vanish and so forth.
Let's just talk about the exciting part, which is all the things we're doing to support this, all the things we just talked about. You know, the biggest thing, I think, is the data piece. This, I think, we've come a long way over the past five years as far as data and looking at data and what that looks like. And Danielle's been a good part of that. And I think, going back to you, you know, I appreciate the congratulations and accolades for special champions, but it is a team approach. And I I couldn't have done any of those things without all the people at this table. You know, we work as a team, we collaborate all the time. I like data, but I don't want to live there. So when data comes up, Danielle's my first phone call. And this piece is huge because we look at this all the time. From a leadership perspective, when we're doing instructional leadership, to the building levels at Triple Sound with the grade levels. And it changes all the time. So it's not just a one and done type of thing. We're looking at it all of the time and and looking at how do we better support our students knowing this information and using it as a guide. So that's huge. Back to the chronic absenteeism, one of the pieces that we've done over the last few years is we have seen an increase in this since COVID and we know that. And we know that remote instruction, kids, some students had a hard time coming back from that. Even before COVID, we had more and more situations where doctors, they write notes, they write notes and say, put my child on home instruction, they prescribe remote instruction, they prescribe home instruction. Chronic absenteeism and what we're doing at the elementary level is, you know, we might come to the CSC table and say the intervention is attendance. Let's work with a family, we've got access specialists, we've got social workers, we can do some wraparound support. This gets much harder as kids get older. Parents will come to the table and say, I can't get them there, what do I do? We send it for an officer. There are sometimes it's really, really hard. And so when parents are at a loss, whether their pediatrician will write a note and say, give them home instruction. The problem is, when you have anxiety or depression, you avoid the stressor, that's negative reinforcement, and all of the, it's a cycle. So Katie Kizoli has worked with us this year, she's calling these medical providers, every single one of them, when they write a note. And she's saying, is this what you really recommend? And and then we'll have them meeting and we'll say, okay, even if it's something that's approved, what's the reentry plan? So we've cut down on a lot of that. And the goal is for our chronically absent students and students who are getting these notes from doctors, what's the plan? Is it, you know, modified scaffolded approach, two to five, like, okay, thirty days and then you have to try a day in the building? That seems to be working a lot better than anything we've done in the past with our secondary students because we're meeting them where they're at. Versus, I think, just saying, oh, a doctor wrote this note, so let's go on home instruction. And then sixty days later, they don't come back. Really, that medical home instruction piece was meant for a student that breaks their leg and needs surgery or has some sort of, there's an end date, the doctor can say they can come back in six weeks. When it's a, you know, a mental health difficulty, there's really no way for them to know when to, and and what's the plan? Is it a pediatrician writing it? Is it a therapist writing it? Are they in therapy? If not, can we get them in? So those are all of the things that we're doing for that piece. We also have, you know, another piece that has has kind of led into that, our school suspensions. We know that when students are suspended, sometimes that, they have a hard time going back after that. So, you know, it breaks their trust and so it's sort of like, why would I go back there? Our two to five program has been huge with that as well because I think we're building connections there this year with students. And, you know, from administrators to our SEL coaches in there, getting kids back in the building and and supporting them the best that we can. Our SEL learning coach just continues to support students, if you think about that. The puzzle pieces that you've seen, the restorative practices, those welcoming and firm strategies, team mental health first aid. One of the huge pieces of that this year, we did for all tenth through twelfth grade, was a big piece of that in every lesson was, who's your person? Identify one person. They had six lessons, but by the end of that, who's the one person at school you can count on or you can talk to or you can trust? So really, and and if you don't have a person, they did, they all did exit tickets. Our school counselors checked in with those students, so let's get you a person. So if you don't have one, how can we help you, support you here at school, build that connection? Obviously, using the BIMAS, which is another data piece, and you talked about that, so I won't go over that too much. I would say back to the learning disability piece where we know that that's a bigger percentage. Jenna talked about the assistive technology, learning coach, specialist. In addition, now that we have her as a full-time person to support instruction, we're not just using her for students with communication devices, but to support learning disabilities. If you think about the data, when you're looking at state tests and students with disabilities, which majority of them are reading and writing, they, and then our students with a disability in reading and writing are going to struggle in math because there's a piece that impacts them. They they aren't able to use all of their accommodations, obviously, on the state test. The state might say, it's craziness. They, I'll leave my opinion out, but they might say, if you can't, they might say they, you can't, you can't use that accommodation. Or, you know, they monitor things like test read, right? So those are things we're giving students on classroom assessments to get them, you know, to progress and have access to the curriculum. Those are things we're doing to support them, they might not be able to use on the state test. So we know we can do better, right? We know we can get those numbers up. And and I'm not saying that we're not going to continue to focus on that. But we also know that's not the best representation of how our students with disabilities are doing because we have other data points like IEP goals and progress monitoring tools that show that they are in progress, that we put a little bit more weight on, as I'll, we'll say about that. And also, we are really focusing on with the science of reading, Tony and I sat down and we use foundations, K three?
P.
D three.
P.
Wilson reading is a program that's really shown scientifically to, it's explicit, it's systematic, it's intensive. Tier two, tier three. If students finish foundations and they are still struggling significantly with reading, Wilson is a good next stop for them. The best thing about it is that if we have a strategic plan where we're using that as a tool, it's so systematic that we could ensure fidelity with it across five buildings. And then students would be able to transition to rate middle school. And we would know where students have left off with Wilson and where they might need to continue. So we've been focusing over the last few months on, and and the district has done that in the past. But with the science of reading, we have more parents asking for it. And I will say, one of the challenges is that we have a lot of special education teachers that will want to go to regular education. So it's, it takes, can take two to three years, potentially longer, to get teachers trained because part of the training includes a practicum where they're observed and they, it's very intensive. So if they leave special education, they might not finish that certification. But we have a plan, we have a rollout plan, we're working to fine tune that and get at least two to three of our teachers trained in every building over the next three to four years, I would say, starting this June, so that we can really focus in on that piece. Jenna talked about TCIS to build the capacity of our support. And then the one last thing I will add that also had to do with the community partnerships is that we are part of a community schools closer. And so Jenna and I have been attending, and Jen's where our learning coach. One of the things we will be doing in the fall will be a needs assessment. And so it's just kind of looking at what community partnerships will support your district and what might, what Reynolds might need might be different than what a band year will need. So it takes a look at all of those pieces and helps you identify community partnerships to support that. One of the things that we'll be doing, based on some of the information we've collected so far, is potentially offering back-to-school haircuts with our school supplies this year. So and utilizing supports of local area hairdresser. So if looking at things like that, it's really exciting. And again, I think it just a piece that all of this comes together, so.
Yes, I had one more thing about, I'm going to circle back to mental health. I apologize earlier, I didn't really articulate myself that while I was out.
I was a field all day with Carrie, so.
A little late in here. But, um, you know, we really focus on our student mental health, but we also want to focus on our staff mental health. That's a priority of ours because obviously, if they're not good, then we can't be there for our students. And so with our, we are going to focus on our staff, SEL, and mental health as well. And we, we have brought some ideas out there about getting a therapist for our staff. But we also have some other, you know, things we're looking into as well. We really want to focus, make that priority this year as well, and we'll make forward.
This panel is for our elementary students during summer school and all the four continuing summer school. It's not a pressure. Is there any way that we can measure that measure, like, you know, like, how these kids, you know, come to school in summer school, different meaning they come to school during the school year? And then they learn differently because of different things going on?
Yes, to ensure that they're not regressing, they're applying at summer schools to avoid this, like, right, regression and maintenance. But then also, we have the reading program that does look at, you know, again, preventing that regression. We have looked at data, we've done that in the past, where maybe we presented that here, where students stay with eighty percent of the students that attend regularly, I will say again, kind of, you know, shoot. They do, not only do they not regress that they make progress, we've shown that data in the past. And Jenna, I don't know if you want to speak to, off the top of your head, but we are continuing to do that, look at data. We're not just using STAR data anymore though, we are looking at other pieces as well. Tori Cypress has been really helpful with that.
Yes, Tori Cypress, and and we, we have, so, you know, students who come, their reading programs really struggle with being awareness, so we're really trying to use those data points that capture those. So things like the PPS in the past, they're very quick snippets, like very quick assessments to give. So we're going to give those pretty in close, just to measure the level.
It's just, it's just a great program to use on the students.
Yeah.
And I just want to follow that really, because it's just an outstanding question. Are there, I'm just wondering if there are opportunities with the things that might be working, you know, like Sam implied, they're working differently in the summer, but they aren't during the regular school year. Are there little areas where there's, there seems to be more rapid improvement or different types of improvement that that we could be looking at in the summer program that maybe would allow us to massage different things, different approaches during the regular school year? And I, and I don't know that there's even an answer for that, it's just kind of an idea to toss around because Sam, as usual, has made the start. Not my fault.
Having been at summer school, there's just a different kind of culture, maybe?
Well, so it's a half day, right? It's a half day, not a full day. The goal really, so we have various, you know, that's a hard question to answer because we have the reading program, which is similar to like a co-teaching classroom. And it's, but it's also during the summer, twelve students versus, you know, twenty-five. They only focus on reading, half day. Our extended two-year program is fif, no more than fifteen students, or most of our students that come. The goal is, get up, get on the bus, come to school every day so that you don't lose eight weeks of school. The goal is get up, get on the bus, come to school every day so that you don't lose eight weeks of school and be like, I'm never going back there, like, I don't want to. It's just, a lot of our students need that consistency, routine, schedule. There are, but to your point, there's the best program, they continue their job coaching. It's just fun. I don't believe that students see it as school, like feel like it's a fun place to go. Are there things that we learn from that? Yes, it's so small that I think, you know, we spend a lot of time there. Everybody's, you know, the people that work summer school are dedicated. We're able to bring things back. And I do think that with the expectations taken off of the table, we see things that are, we learn things about students. And we have the opportunity and the time and things slow down a little bit to say, oh, this works or this is working or let's try this. And we do see a lot of progress when students return from the fall after they've attended a summer. I don't know if I answered your question.
No, that's great.
So I was just gonna say real quick, Carrie, is it just no longer like the time that adults have with the students, the built relationships that are, the positive connection those students make with adults and then to school? Carrie, over there, you see that, Carrie, over there, I would, based on the recent.
I guess I kind of, like Adam was saying, if we're finding these things work during the summer, can we translate any of those to the school year, like whether it's class sizes, whether it's changing, you know, the timing of how long a class has to be here, those types of things? Is there any of those things that we could potentially, you know, transition to a normal school year that would be quite efficient?
Yes, and so, yeah, and sometimes that means giving people the permission to lower the expectations because when we do that, sometimes we see behavior difficulties decrease in that, you know, safety is number one priority. And so, yes, I think sometimes all of that information is really helpful adding into the school year. And I think to Dave's point, the staff that work summer school are trusted colleagues. So it also comes from the colleagues sometimes that, oh, wow, we didn't see that at summer school or here's what I did. And being able to think outside of the box and be solution focused and problem solve to again, keep our students here because if those expectations or that setting or whatnot is creating an issue, how do we scale that back, whether that's a quiet corner in the classroom or a wellness space? But yes, those are all things that we are able to take into account. And we do progress reports over the summer, team staff communicates with the students in the fall, all through the link principals, Joe, Dave, everybody's over there at some point. So, yeah, it's.
Thank you, just to kind of bring to a close, even just the idea of, you know, everyone is educators and the whole, Carrie mentioned the solution focus and we're always looking for what we can do to help improve the student experience, student structure, et cetera. And so, you know, from professional development that we're offering or others or, you know, just training from some of the local universities, our staff is getting, they're walking out with additional resources and their toolkit ultimately helping the experience for students better. And so if we aren't continuing to do that and we have a problem, we're just relying on what we've always done. So the status quo is no longer the way we approach and it's a combination of all those things. Staff collaborating, having a conversation, improve each other about what's working in classrooms and that's how we continue to grow and improve.
Well, thank you, one and all. That was informative, that was enlightening. And I want to kind of say, what Carrie said is that we love high graduation rates. We love high academic reports. However, I do understand, I think, what you're alluding to, and I think everybody here understands that numbers don't measure everything.
That's right.
And what we support is these kids get the best experience. So we encourage you to do that, please do. Okay, we're adjourned and we'll have a public hearing in, what, two minutes?
Two minutes.